You're good, Robert, to go.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome you to the regular session of the Milwaukee Planning Commission. Agendas and additional copies of staff reports are available on the city website at www.milwaukeeOregon.gov. The easiest way to locate them is to navigate to the community calendar where tonight's meeting page is posted. If you've not reviewed the agenda, please do so. It contains important information about the process we will follow this evening. If you wish to provide public comment, please log into the Zoom meeting or call into the meeting. Instructions for logging in and calling in are located on the meeting page of the city's website. In order to be included in the meeting record, public comments must be received during the applicable portion of the meeting. That is, general comments must be made during the open audience participation portion of the meeting. And comments on specific public hearings or work session must be made before the close of the public testimony portion of the agenda item. Are there any informational items from the staff?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, at this point, this is an opportunity to comment on items not on tonight's agenda. If you wish to comment on an item that is on the agenda, there will be time for comments after the staff presentation. Does anyone wish to comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? If so, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom to indicate that you wish to make a comment. We will also check with any audience members who have called into the Zoom meeting by phone. Before you testify, please remember you state your name and address for the record.
I think the only attendees here are the applicants for the public hearing tonight, so.
So we have no attendees from the from the public at this point, okay?
No.
Well, if they come in, they'll come in and we'll let them join, okay? We will now move on to tonight's public hearing. We will follow the basic format listed on the back of the agenda, including the staff report presentation, testimony and planning commission deliberation. Tonight's agenda item is a variance, and it's ADU request. The public hearing on the ADU request is called order. The purpose of this hearing is to consider application numbers VR-2020-004 and ADU-2020-005 regarding a proposal for a conversion of a 200 square foot of an existing accessory building into an accessory dwelling unit in a variance to the footprint size of the accessory building. The applicant has the burden of proving that the application is consistent with the city Milwaukee's subdivision ordinance comprehensive plan, any applicable municipal code provisions, and that the proposal conforms with all of the city's applicable criteria. I would now ask the staff to cite the zoning ordinance sections where the criteria can be found.
It is 19301, low-density residential, 19.700 public facilities improvements, 19.910.1 accessory dwelling units, 19.911 variances, Chapter 12 Streets, Sidewalks and Public Places, and 19.1006 Type 3 review.
Thank you. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria. Failure to address a criterion or raise an issue with sufficient detail to allow the planning commission an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue precludes appeal to the city council based on that issue. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient detail to allow response precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any party with standing may be appeal the decision of the planning commission to the city council. Persons with standing on those or those who submit comments are testified via Zoom. We will, I will again ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to provide public testimony. Do we have anyone who's come in?
No.
Okay. So at this point, I would like to go over the conflicts of interest and site visits with commissioners. Does any member of the planning commission wish to abstain from this hearing? No. The noes have it. Does any member of the planning commission wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest? No.
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 The noes have it. Does any member of the planning commission wish to report on any ex parte contacts? No.
No.
Noes have it. Will any commissioner who's visited the site prior to this hearing please raise their hand just in just on the video? Okay. Several have raised their hands, not all. Did the commissioners who visited the site speak to anyone at the site or note anything different from what is indicated in the staff report for this application? No on that part.
No.
Those who had visited the site indicated no. Does any member of the audience, we don't have any members of the audience, but I'll give them a chance if they want to chime in, wish to challenge the participation of any member of the planning commission? I suspect we've had no one sign in, Mary?
No.
Okay. And does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the planning commission? And I'm assuming that we still have not got anyone signed in. Okay. So let's proceed to the staff report presentation.
All right, let me share my screen here really quickly. And y'all can hear me fine, right? Even with my mask on?
I can hear you fine, Mary.
Great. Okay. All right. Okay, so I'll start off the public hearing presentation. This is for the application VR-2020-004 and ADU-2020-005 for a proposal of an ADU with an 840 square foot accessory structure. So I'll move to the next slide. So this is the location of the site. It's on off of 43rd Avenue near Johnson Creek Boulevard there. It's about .31 acres. And it is surrounded by some quite large properties, you can see as well as some smaller. It ranges from around 7,000 square feet to over 20,000 square feet in size for some of the properties surrounding it. And the site itself is probably on the larger end for the area, as you can see there. And I'll and it's surrounded by single unit dwellings as well, so consistent with what's going on in the area. And the site currently has an existing single dwelling unit, a single unit dwelling, as well as the existing accessory structure that we'll be talking about more in this presentation. This is the zoning area surrounding the property. It's all R7 zone, as you can see with that yellow color. So again, the zone for this property is consistent with the surrounding area as well. And the proposal is, as we mentioned before, it's to convert 200 square feet of the existing 840 square foot accessory structure into an accessory dwelling unit. And the variance is for the footprint of the existing structure. So the ADU itself does not go over the size limit for an ADU in our seven zone, but the structure footprint does, the 40 square feet does. And so that's where the variance is being requested for. I also want to mention, I think it might have been buried a little bit in the staff report, but the applicants have also applied for the an ADU waiver, which is part of our EDU pilot program. And what that is intended to do is to see how we can kind of reduce some of the costs that it is to create ADUs in Milwaukee. And that includes waiving the system development charges, the city-only system development charges for an ADU, which is about $2,000, as well as any frontage improvements. So you'll notice in the findings and the staff report, it mentions that if they don't have a waiver, they would have to do some frontage improvements, things like that. But because they've applied for this program, they have the ability to waive those in the future if they get approval of this land use review. So I wanted to mention that briefly because I think it might have been a little bit confusing. And of course, you can ask me questions about that afterwards, too, if you have questions on that. So this is just a visual of kind of what the site plan looks like. And I took this, this is actually not a new shop, it's the existing shop here. But this was from their building plans about 10 years ago. And and the applicant kind of created a little graphic here that shows where the ADU is going in the back there of that existing shop. And you can see it's behind the existing house and kind of towards the back of the property. So 43rd is to the, I guess, the left of your screen. And and then Johnson Creek Boulevard is kind of would be towards the south. So north, north is yourself of the screen. So for this presentation, the key issues we'll talk about are the ones in the staff report, which is, one, is the variance request reasonable and appropriate? And two, does the proposed ADU meet relevant requirements? So you can see here, this is the approval criteria for a variance. They need to provide an alternatives analysis, show that it avoids or minimizes impacts to surrounding properties, has desirable public benefits, responds to the existing built or natural environment, and impacts from the proposed variance will be mitigated to the extent practicable. So the alternatives analysis is kind of just one really, which would be to take out 40 square feet of the building to make it fit the the requirement of our ADU's footprint size. And the applicant had this building built before it had decided to do put an ADU in it. And I meet and met all the criteria for an accessory structure to begin with. It just happened when they decided they wanted to put an ADU in it, it was just 40 square feet over. And the the process to kind of remove 40 square feet didn't seem to weigh, felt that it was outweighed by just allowing for a variance to that 40 square feet versus the cost that would that would happen to kind of just make the building a little bit smaller. There are no proposed alterations to the building, no, nothing would happen in terms of it getting expanded or anything like that. So in terms of minimizing impacts to surrounding properties, it's it's not going to be impacting anything more than what it already kind of is as the building itself. It's not going to be closer to any sort of buildings than it already is right now. In terms of desirable public benefits, it will be providing housing in terms of short-term housing for people. And it and it does push, it creates another dwelling unit. So it pushes this property closer to the density requirements for the R7 zone as well. And again, responding to the existing or built environment, the building itself isn't going to change at all. So no landscaping will be taken out. All trees will be will still exist. Anything that's been built has already been approved back about 10 years ago. And then again, impacts to proposed variance will be mitigated to the extent practicable. The the applicants have said that they would consider using the ADU as a short-term rental, which is allowed in the R7 zone. And so that's, that's an impact that that the applicant is willing to kind of deal with in terms of working with the rentals or anything like that. So any sort of impact should be pretty minimal in terms of it being a pretty small rental unit as well. And the next key issue was the ADU requirement. So besides the building footprint that the variance has requested to be 40 square feet over, all other standards are met for an ADU, for a type 2 ADU, which is building height and setback, lot coverage, minimum vegetation, and other specifics criteria that is mentioned more in 19.910.1. So in terms of requirements for the ADU, again, it's just the building footprint variance that they're trying to get approved, but for everything else, it does meet the requirements. The city did receive three comments from community members, and those are in your staff reports. All were in support of the proposal, though. So we didn't have any that were neutral or opposed, so they were all in support. So in terms of staff recommendations, we do recommend to approve the variance resulting in an accessory dwelling unit that exceeds the maximum building footprint standard by 40 square feet, as well as approve the accessory dwelling unit. And this will result in the continued use of the existing accessory building and making sure that it maintains its current dimensions. That was also in our conditions of approval. And we also recommend to adopt the attached findings and conditions of approval. So you, as the planning commission, have four options. You can approve the application subject to the recommended findings and conditions of approval, approve the application with modified findings and conditions of approval, deny the application upon finding that it does not meet approval criteria, or continue the hearing. It was kind of quick, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
Are there any questions, clarifying questions for the commissioners to the mayor?
May I ask a general question?
Yes.
What is the requirements of an ADU? Is it a stove and a bathroom?
Oh, like what constitute it as an ADU? Well, you can, it automatically gets triggered into needing an ADU approval if it does have a two, I believe it's a 220 connection, which is usually typical for an oven. And so if you plan to have like a kitchen facility with an oven and stove, it'll usually trigger that to be an ADU. An applicant can also request to have a necessary structure be approved as an ADU, even if they don't have those facilities. But you are automatically triggered into needing the approval if you have those kitchen facilities.
And that and a bathroom is not required?
No.
Thank you.
So I think we've already, you've already answered the question, but I'll ask it anyway. Any additional correspondence beyond the three emails that we had prior in the package?
No, I didn't. I did not see any.
Okay. So at this point, I'll turn it over to the applicant or their representative.
Yeah, let me. I will move them over to panelists, so they can speak if they would choose to. There we go. And you can turn your video on if you want. Yeah, there you go. And you can turn your video on if you want. Yeah, there you go.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mary.
The floor is yours.
I'm not sure we have any questions. You guys are doing a good job. The only question is, it approved.
What's next? How do we, where do we go from here?
Do you have any comments to tell us about your, your, your application?
I think Mary covered everything really well. I don't know what, I don't know what else we would offer, but we're happy to answer any questions if you have any.
That's fine. We would, we wanted to make sure you had a chance. Let me ask if the commissioners have any questions for the applicants.
I have a question, Chairman Macy.
Yes, go ahead.
Is it your intent to rent out the ADU? Or how are, do you have plans to? What are your plans, I guess?
We're not, we're not entirely sure because we don't know what's going to be permissible. I think once we, according to our conversations with Mary, once, once we get approval from y'all, if we get approval from y'all, we also need to work with the county. So we need to find out what will be permissible legally. But I think if you, if it were up to us and all things were permissible, we would use it as a short-term rental and/or for friends and family to come and stay. And then also as a third option, as a permanent rental, but again, not knowing what will ultimately be allowable.
Okay, I have one more question just for the record. Has the process with the city of Milwaukee or the except, special exception that have been made for things like the SDC costs and investments made this an easier process for you? And if those were not in place, would you have to reconsider just for our knowledge?
I'm so sorry, you glitched out just a tiny bit. Trigger part of the thing. I don't know. We got it.
Nope, that's okay. I am curious if some of the allowances that the city has put in place made it easier for you? And if they weren't in place, would you be able to be here in front of us asking for this variance?
I understand the question. I mean, we don't, we're not, we don't know the bottom line on the savings. If you're talking about the waiver program, I'm not sure. You're still breaking up a bunch.
Oh, I apologize.
That's all right.
Okay, it's more just for our information, I guess, as we see more of these. That's okay.
But I mean, the process so far, working with Mary has been great. She's been super communicative and very helpful in answering all of our questions. Again, I don't, we still don't know which way we're going to pivot. So I don't know that we know how, to know what the future holds, but so far it's been really helpful working with Mary.
And maybe to clarify with what Commissioner Lutzfeldt was saying, was asking is, so the waiver program was helpful for you all in terms of knowing you could get some cost relief to kind of go forward with those variants.
Definitely.
Yeah. You threatened us with only 20 participants. So it, we shifted gears, we got it done. It worked.
Perfect. That's good to hear. Thank you, Mary.
I have a fun question. I think more for staff than for the applicants. So I could wait if there's other questions for the applicants.
Let me, let me give, let me give anyone else a question, a chance to ask questions of the avalas before we shift to the staff. Any commissioners have any other questions for avalas? Okay. So does the planning commission have any comments for the staff? Go ahead.
Mary, I'm just curious if we approve this variance for the, for the 200 square feet. Is there any sort of, what, what would happen if the applicants or future owners want to then fully convert the rest of the structure into an ADU? Are there any prohibitions on that? Or what would the process be? Could you just help us understand that a little bit more?
Yeah. So the approval for the EDU currently says that it's for the 200 square feet. You can do a modification to an approved land use application. So if this does get approved, you can modify that with a, I believe it's either type one, if it's a minor modification or a type two, I think it's up to Laura's decision, the, the planning manager. But you can modify an existing approval. But as long as it's meeting the approval criteria for an ADU, so as long as they don't go over that 800 square feet, it'll probably just be like a minor, a minor modification to the land use approval.
Great, thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions for the staff? Okay, this is for the avalas. At this point, we usually give the applicant one last chance because sometimes we have proposals that have opposition. We don't have that tonight, but we always give the applicants one last chance for a rebuttal or additional comments. I think you're, I think you're good to go. So if not, I'll close the public testimony portion of this hearing. And the public testimony portion of this hearing on variance and ADU request VR 2020004 and ADU 2020005 is now closed. Is the commission ready for discussion? Sounds like they are. Any comments from the commission? Okay, so would anyone like to?
Chair Massey, I'll be, go ahead and make a motion to approve application VR 202004 ADU 202005 and adopt the recommended findings and conditions of approval found in attachments one and two.
I second.
I'll second.
Not a second? All in favor, say aye, aye.
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 I think we have a unanimous approval. So if anyone wishes to appeal this decision to city council, you must make, they must make an application stating the grounds for your appeal within 15 days of the mailing of the decision. And the planning staff can help you with that on details. Thank you to the avalas, and we wish you well with your project.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The next attended item is work session item ZA 202001 regarding proposed code amendments for emergency temporary housing. I will ask the staff, staff for their presentation.
Okay, I'm going to change my background.
I like the background, Vera.
It was a good one. It was for a going away party for one of our admins. Everyone else in TV land just got to see that. Okay. Good evening, commissioners. Vera Colley, senior planner. I'm here to talk with you about some proposed code amendments that we're preparing for a public hearing later in December related to our temporary use permit program. I'm going to share my screen. I'm hoping, oh, that didn't work. Sorry. Let's try that again. Thought I had it up. I guess not.
Is it telling you you can share or can't share, Vera?
No, I just.
Okay.
Is it? And hopefully.
He's just making sure that the going away photos don't start popping.
Right, that's right. Okay. Okay, can everyone see the PowerPoint presentation? Great, thank you. Okay. The proposed amendments have to do with, so title 11.05 has to do with our temporary use permit program. And right now, what that program does is allows us to issue temporary use permits for things like construction parking. We've used this program to allow for the outdoor seating that folks might be seeing downtown or around some of our restaurants. But what we don't have, or what the code does not do, it doesn't really give us a direct or a specific process to make sure that, to allow us to prove temporary use permits for temporary emergency housing. As we outlined in the staff report, staff was responding recently or over the summer to emergency temporary housing requests due to, due to displacement caused by the wildfires. And so we use this process to, to respond to that emergency by allowing local churches to use their parking lots to allow for the emergency temporary housing. But as I said, the current code language doesn't explicitly define temporary housing as an allowable use through this permit program. So what we're proposing are some strategic code fixes to, to provide language that defines temporary housing as an allowed use through this temporary use permit program. We think, or we hope that it will clarify and simplify the process for both applicants and staff who would be administering the permits. And this is, temporary use permits are permits that are issued and signed off by either the community development director or the planning managers. So it's a staff level approval. And we want to make sure that we're able to respond to an emergency quickly. So the amendments, we think are minor. They're not intended to affect, you know, the overall intent of the existing regulations. We don't think it's a significant change in policy. But we think that it will help us be able to provide some really strategic and specific assistance during emergency situations. For example, during the wildfires, the COVID-19 situation, extreme cold or heat events in the winter and the summer would allow us to be able to issue these kinds of permits during those kinds of situations. As outlined in the underlined strikeout version of the code that was a proposal that was in your staff report, we have outlined some requirements and some limitations. And staff looked to some other cities that had similar programs to try to see if we could create some parameters around these permits. We're trying to balance the idea of being able to act quickly and be able to provide these permits to folks that need them, but at the same time, make sure that we're conscious of the surrounding properties. You know, if, for example, on a church property or something, you could have, you know, residential neighborhoods around that. So we want to make sure that folks feel comfortable and staff is comfortable with sort of what the parameters are for these permits. So we've outlined some requirements and limitations for these permits. Again, we borrowed some of these ideas from, the city of Eugene has some similar programs. So if you're wondering where some of these came from, where we came up, for example, with the number of six vehicles, it came from the city of Eugene. Again, trying to kind of find a good balance between some of these parameters. So again, we've outlined some of these limitations and requirements that were in the code. We kind of started off with this idea of an emergency declaration by council, and I've identified, we've identified that as a key question. So I'm going to ask a little bit more about that from you folks during this work session. We want to, you know, we're going to limit the, limit the sites to public nonprofit or religious sites. We need, we want to make sure that the sites provide sanitary facilities, garbage disposal, that there's a storage area for personal items for folks that, and again, this limitation on the number of vehicles, if it's outdoor space for housing, for this temporary housing. Indoor sheltering has to adhere, of course, to applicable building codes. And we wanted to limit this to two, three-month permits within any 12-month period. The building permit allows for temporary sheltering like this up to 90 days. And after 90 days, it's not, no longer considered temporary, and that triggers things like sprinklers and those kinds of infrastructure for indoor, indoor housing. So we wanted to make sure that we were staying underneath or within those parameters for building code without having to trigger all of those extensive infrastructure improvements for indoor housing, again, intending it to be temporary in, during emergency situations. The key issue that I mentioned was this idea of when to know, when it's, when we can sort of allow for these kind of temporary permits, under what circumstances? Emergency declaration was something that was considered, and it's something that's in the proposed code language that you had in your packet. But now we're, we're sort of rethinking that and trying to understand from, you know, from you, if you have some ideas about what is the right parameter to reflect kind of what we're trying to do, this focused nature of the, of the amendments. We want to be able to respond to extreme weather events, but we want to make sure that we have the right balance of restrictions. But an emergency declaration by council, is that the right kind of trigger for, for something like this? Does, do we need to wait? Or what we don't want to have happen is that we have to wait, that we're not able to issue these permits during an extreme situation like, like, you know, extreme cold during the winter or a flood or something like that? Do we need to wait for council to issue an emergency declaration? And the idea of the, the housing emergency, it's sort of just the state of housing right now. I don't know that we can call it a housing emergency anymore. What are we on? I think the fourth or fifth reiteration or re-up of our housing emergency declaration from council. So we're trying to understand kind of what's the right, right mechanism for being able to do that. So it's something that we're hoping that maybe we can get some feedback from you folks on, or if you have any other ideas for other restrictions or limitations or other things that we should be thinking about as we move forward with the code language. The public hearing is coming up later in December with you folks. We also have a work session scheduled with council. And then we're expecting to go to council with the final code amendment package in January so that we can get this going for, for the winter. So maybe I will kind of move the screen up here. But happy to answer any questions that you might have. Leila Aman, the community development director is on the call or in the meeting as well to be able to answer any questions from the CD perspective as well. But any questions or any feedback? That's why we have, we want to schedule this work session so we could get any, any assistance or any advice from you that we can. So with that, I'll conclude.
Do you have any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Edge.
So I was wondering if in addition, or optionally, in addition to maybe city council declaring an emergency, if instead the county declared an emergency that, you know, applied to, you know, the city or the state, you know, the governor declared an emergency that applied to the state. And so that way, it wouldn't necessarily require city council to take the action. If, you know, I know it's not exactly a chain of command, but if, you know, if someone else who has the authority to declare an emergency that applies to the city had done so, then you know, that would be the equivalent to the city doing so in this particular case. I'm also really curious about six, and I'm wondering, you know, six vehicles. And I'm wondering, is there any, is there any thought to having that scale to the size of the subject site? Or the area that's available for parking? Or you know, is there a reason that Eugene chose six that you're aware of? Other than just modeling our choice after their decision? Was their decision based on some performance objective or?
It's a good question, if I may. They, as far as I know, the, they have a, they have a variety of these of options for kind of temporary or housing transitional style of housing. And six is what they used for their permit program that was for a similar kind of program like this, where it doesn't go through a whole land use review or so on. It's kind of a, almost like an over the counter kind of permit. As long as you meet the following requirements, you can go and do this. And it was sort of intended to be, I think, the least number of hoops to jump through. But as far as whether, you know, what's the magic number, six, eight, four, what have you? I could probably find out from Eugene. I don't know that I know why they, why they chose six, but I like the idea of scaling kind of the number to the size of the site would just be a matter of, kind of figure out what's the right, you know, what's the right measurement or what's the right metric for that. But that's a good, that's a good idea.
And it could certainly also have something to do with the relationship of the site to, you know, residential areas, I guess. You know, if you're in a, a more, or if you're in a less residential, you know, area where the site is, then, you know, maybe six, maybe you could do more than six. You know, and I recognize that we're probably choosing six so that we can have some consideration of the neighbors. And so if there are fewer neighbors, then maybe we can do more than six on a particular site. All else, you know, kind of fitting, you know, the, the standard. Another question I have is, Another question I have is about, I guess, this kind of practice occurring in a one-off basis on individual residential lots, where, you know, an RV, you know, comes in and parks for a while, you know, on a residential lot and, you know, for the same reasons that, you know, we're providing the housing here. Does that need to be permitted in the same manner? Is that just an outright allowed use in the residential area? Or this may not be the right time to address that issue, but I was just kind of curious.
It's, it's a good question. Right now, our code doesn't allow folks to live in RVs sort of generally in the code. But through this process, we were creating this process specifically for, again, sites that are owned by public entities, nonprofits, that kind of thing, as opposed to, and I see where you're going with it, for this idea of on an individual on a residential lot. Yeah. And I think during an emergency, yeah, I think that's something that we would want to, we would, we would think about and see kind of what does that mean, you know, from a impacts to other neighbors and so on. And I, you know, if we are focusing it on an emergency situation, maybe there's a way to address that, you know, with, with neighbors and butters. But we can bring that back and bring that question up, you know, all of these questions up to the, to the city council as well and see, you know, how we might be able to address some of these. But you're raising some really great ideas.
And then consistent with the newly adopted plan, you know, we're thinking a lot about climate change. And one of the issues that, you know, we had discussed, you know, is the idea or the concern about potential climate related displacement and a large scale, you know, short duration, large scale displacement that could, you know, end up with a lot of people showing up. And if there is some way that a similar type of emergency declaration could, you know, kind of accommodate like a larger scale temporary accommodations consistent with, you know, the scale of the emergency, that might be appropriate for us to consider. Also, maybe not in this particular set of changes, but something going forward for sure. I, I think we should be thinking about that. And I think that's all I have. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Edge. Yes, Commissioner Loesvelt.
Can you all hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. I'm actually pretty thickened to the weeds on this with the city of Portland and was a part of the mass shelter navigation center north of the Broadway Bridge in downtown. And a couple of things came to my mind. I wonder if, I was particularly concerned about the parking being so specific and would definitely suggest scaling that to the appropriate size of the use. Considering a number of different typologies, I hope that mass shelters are part of the consideration as they are, you know, effective at providing large number of groups shelter during one of these situations. And I would also, I would suggest that the timing that you're kind of framing this on is maybe, needs more flexibility. For example, the city of Portland, the mass shelter that we designed is, has a five year timeline. And it is based on the state of emergency that the mayor had put into place and has been continued a number of times. So I would just suggest, because it's difficult with that type of a timeline, six months, to, to really invest in a strategy. And it may be that the, what's being proposed doesn't provide enough flexibility for people who may be interested in investing in a larger solution, like a mass, mass shelter. And I'm curious why private property or privately owned property is excluded specifically? And then if there are, for example, in like a village typology where you have separate units that are built up, would each unit be separately permitted, separately reviewed? Or would you consider one as a prototype that could be reviewed and, and approved through the city? That's something to think about because in villages, each one is like a pod and the individual family or individual lives within one. And there's communal kind of kitchen, shared services. I think those were the primary questions that I had. And one last one is relative to design review criteria or design standards. So in the city of Portland, we still had to adhere to design standards. We were within two overlays. So we actually had to go in front of the design commission and prove our shelter met the criteria of the River District within the Pearl. So that actually, it was a difficult process for the team, but it also actually, I think, helped us with the community and how the community approached the presence of this new shelter within their neighborhood. So just suggest that. And then the community is always a very, was always a very important piece for us to consider as we were designing. And so I'm not sure if, if you are considering what type of outreach is, might be required, what type of, you know, mailings have to be offered for, for these type of temporary activities to be allowed? But I guarantee they will want to hear and they will want to be actively involved in voicing concern or support, one way or the other. Those are my thoughts.
Chair Massey, could I respond to a couple of those things?
Yes, please.
Because I think, and I think I might ask Leila to jump in on, on this response, because Lauren, you've raised a lot of really great questions. And I think part of what we're trying to do here is to be able to, and design review and the whole idea of a mass shelter and so on. I think this is, this was intended to be a way to address an immediate concern of wildfire displacement. We need to be able to permit a church to be able to allow some RVs to be able to park in their parking lot while that's all happening, as an example, because that just happened a couple of months ago. I think what you are referring to, I think, is something that is sort of another phase of what we're going to be looking at through, I think, the community service use process to be able to do more of a, when you're talking about a timeline of, you know, a five year kind of situation, I think that's a more, I'm going to call it a semi-permanent kind of way of addressing some of these things. And I know that Leila's team is, we're looking at another, another way of addressing that kind of more transitional housing, I would call it, as opposed to this sort of temporary emergency housing that's intended to issue, to address, you know, the extreme cold in the winter. I got three month thing. I need to be able to allow for some kind of housing to happen here to get folks off the streets and into, into a warm place. So this idea of this temporary permit is intended to be a one-off kind of thing for a very short period of time. And what you're talking about, and we've, we have been talking about it, is a much more, I think, a more robust process that we're going to be talking about. It will have likely some kind of land use review, I think, probably design review, much more outreach. Right now, you know, we've communicated this, this process and this code amendment package with all of the NDAs. And we've already received some feedback from that perspective. But I think, and again, I'll have maybe Leila jump in a little bit to kind of, to kind of talk about what I think this next round of code amendments are. But you've brought up some really great, great points. I just think that it might be for the next phase of things that we're talking about, but I'll let Leila jump in on that, except I think she's a little distracted right this second. There she is.
Dogs, of course, went nuts as soon as Vera said my name. So sorry.
Sorry.
Just add, if I may, I think you're right, Commissioner Loesvelt, that there's a number of things that you brought up here. And I just want to clarify, we're kind of taking two tacks at this. The first, I think Vera described really well, is just kind of, this is stuff that we've experienced every year. We get churches coming in, asking for these temporary use permanents. As a team, we've been exploring multiple ways to address permanent transitional housing, as opposed to like a temporary kind of, this is intended to be kind of a quick fix deal to an emergency situation. We just want clarification for staff, because every year we have to kind of interpret the code. So we are looking to planning commission and council to really give us clear direction that yes, we approve of this kind of use. This is appropriate for this intent. But what we're also doing is my team and working with planning is we're, we have been doing a lot of research into temporary, permanent transitional use types, which can range from anywhere from having Conestoga huts on a site that is managed by a nonprofit over a longer period of time to what you've described, working on in the city of Portland. We realize that that's going to take some thoughtful outreach to our community. And so what we're doing here today is trying to get, advance this kind of emergency fix, give staff clear direction, let us start working on that. And then I'm working with the team to try to start working towards that outreach process. And we expect to kick that off likely when the housing code work is done, because I'm also sensitive to overtaxing our community. We're, we're asking a lot of tough questions. And so internally, that's kind of the approach that we're taking as we're going to be working through the housing code work. We've done a lot of research. We'll be tapping into you, if we may, Commissioner Loesvelt, to get some input on what you've been working on. But that's the kind of background work we're doing now. So the idea would be launch more of a community conversation around these, because, yeah, we all know very well that a lot of people care about this. And so, so that's the idea is we'll come probably with some bigger fixes and recommendations about this time next year, is my guess. But we'll be kicking that work off in earnest, for sure.
Okay, two, two follow-up thoughts. I think for future, when we do have that discussion, it's much easier to plan and to consider, you know, growing partnerships and investing if, if that type of semi-permanent is not hinged on an emergency declaration that has a horizon. I think that's maybe a downfall of the city of Portland is that people are on edge based on the political winds that may be as to whether they invest in a process of, of a more semi-permanent. So just consider that. And then the other thing about, you know, that, that timeframe is that while the incident may be temporary, a fire may be temporary, a flood may be temporary, it is an event that causes houselessness to someone that will last much longer than the event itself. So what do you do when someone has filed their second, you know, their, their, their second application for that second six month period of time? Those people, after that period of time, still find themselves without a home, without an option? And so where do they go? So I'm just, I'm just asking you to think, and I'm sure you are thinking about, though the event may be temporary, that the effect of it may be long outlast that original timeframe that you've set for yourself. So that's, that's difficult. And then what, where do you ask people to go after that?
I just want to echo a little bit. Can you, am I, I think I'm unmuted, right? I did read a study, I'm sure probably a lot of people have, but west side of I-5 with the earthquake or something that will hit, there, if it's a big one, we might be like, we, not that, there was 40,000 people, I think, displaced from the fires, but not everybody lost their homes. And so I just think, just to kind of echo what Lauren was saying, you know, earthquake wise, or, you know, reading some of that as we kind of move into this direction too, and planning from, if it is the west side of I-5, all of those people will be coming here until, so that's just kind of a thought. And then the other thought that I had, that sounds like this will kind of be followed up on, or, I don't know, but case workers or somebody to kind of help either assess, you know, how temporary or what are the needs of the people staying or that need this temporary housing or shelter space? So caseworkers or somebody to kind of assess, like, what are the needs to kind of be able to transition successfully to more permanent housing? So that's my thoughts, my due sense.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have thoughts? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question on the, so it's two, three month periods, correct? Okay. And is there contingency for any events that last longer than that, such as COVID? I mean, we're already probably, I think, what, eight months into COVID? So if this was something that was in effect right now, we would already have expired both those three month periods. So is there any contingencies for any emergency issues that happen beyond that point?
It's a good, it's a good point. Right now, it was written that it was really intended to be for those two, three month periods. But I already have notes in here that we should be, consider extensions, question mark, because so we can bring that up as a, as a, as another issue, you know, to kind of see if that's, if that's the way to go. And that's what I'm hearing from this group. So, so we will definitely bring that, bring that forward as, as more key issues for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jacob?
Thanks. Kind of a couple of questions, I think, similar to what Commissioner Edge said in terms of, it really encouraged you to think about kind of scaling to the site and what the site is able to offer. I think maybe thinking about kind of context specific to that site as well as thinking about like amenities that might be on site. So, you know, for example, some churches or schools, you know, have shower facilities, have bathrooms, have kitchens, those kinds of things that might be able to let you scale in a different way as, as a vacant industrial parcel. I think it would be useful, and I feel like I have through the course of this conversation, but I also feel like I'm still not fully there of kind of clarifying the intent. You know, is the intent solely focused on natural disasters? Or are we also talking about, for lack of a better word, what I'll call like, social economic disasters? And so I think getting a little bit more clarity on, on what is the kind of emergency that you're trying to address? Is a housing emergency the same as the wildfire emergency? I think, to maybe put a fine point on it. I think another thing is, I do think that like a council or to Commissioner Edge's point, maybe hire the county or the governor as kind of the triggering event would, would make sense. And then kind of also support being creative around kind of the time horizon. You know, recovery can take a while in a disaster. And so maybe we should be thinking about something like no more than four, three month periods over an 18 month time horizon or something like that. And then maybe it's just a final kind of comment question is, you know, what sort of insurance liability issues might, we want to understand as a community, if, if somebody is taking this on and how is their insurance extending to the, the hosts or, or as a host, extending to the people that are coming to stay on their site? So those are just a, a number of things that I would encourage you to think about.
Other comments from the commissioners?
I have some, if I may.
Go ahead.
So I understand example number one, the wildfire. I don't know how COVID is considered a housing emergency. And what I don't understand is, is that we already have rules for warming and cooling shelters, correct? Those already exist?
No, they don't.
Okay, well, we have, we, I know that at least two or three years ago, we went through, the planning commission went through, you know, what a homeless shelter or houseless shelter, or whatever they're called now, you know, the requirements are. So what it seems like to me, from reading what I got from the staff report, it sounded like that the idea was, in case if there was an emergency evacuation, right, to be able to set up these rules, that these rules aren't meant to bypass the other rules that are already in place for a temporary situation. And so And so I'm, I am concerned if we want warming and sheltering, or warming and cooling shelter rules, we should create warming and cooling shelter rules. If we want, uh, if we want to do, um, homeless, uh, areas for churches and be able to have them indoors and stuff. We, i- if the rules are too stringent, then maybe we need to release those rules. What I would much prefer have this called would be emergency evacuation shelter slash gathering space should be the title of this. And then that gets to Commissioner Sherman's point. Hey, look, a- at least we have defined it a lot better. And then that way we don't have to rely on the political whims of our counselors to decide what is an emergency and what isn't. And so if you look at it that way, my suggestion would be is that you contact Greg Ramirez with the North Clackamas Fire District. Uh, he's the emergency response manager. Or you talk to Clackamas County and talk about, uh, what a emergency evacuation shelter or gathering space is and what is required for that. It could be, uh, y- you know, could, uh, all of a sudden, uh, Clackamas Town Center turned into an, uh, an emergency evacuation shelter. And, you know, they could get as many vehicles in there as they possibly could, uh, and set up makeshift kitchens. So the way I look at this is the way that if, um, uh, if, uh, an apartment building burnt down, we would be able to find a place where the American Red Cross could set up an emergency shelter to help these people, uh, for the, you know, five or six days until they can get their life back in order. Even, even with the wildfires, uh, you know, people have insurance. They still have their jobs. They still have, I mean, they still have options. They're not, this is not designed for people, uh, or, uh, at least from what the staff report presented, that this was not designed to help people get back up on their feet, but provide the emergency needs that they need right away, uh, so that they can, once their lives are sorted out, their insurance kicks in. And, uh, their lives get back a little bit more to normal. I mean, nobody wants to live, look, trust me. I lived in a mobile home while we were building our house for three months in the winter and it was miserable. Nobody wants to live that way. And, um, and so when they're, they're just looking for temporary relief. If this is about building, uh, villages for housing, this needs to go way beyond than what we are doing tonight. Now, you know what? But it sounds that way. And so the way that you're writing the code, if council declares a housing emergency, which has no definition to it, except for what they decide it is, then that means that, uh, we can, then, uh, you can just go out there and go set up, uh, mash units, or you can go, uh, buy a whole bunch of tiny little trailers in a church parking lot. That is something totally different than what I think the intent is. So my suggestion would be, and maybe you need to have a discussion with council on what their intent was, but to call this emergency evacuation shelter and gathering space. And that will take kind of some of this confusion, uh, out of it. I mean, that's my, that's my take on it. And if we need to get warming and cooling shelter standards in, we should get those right away. Cause I know that we, we tell people that they can go there to them. I know they exist. So if we don't have standards for them, we should get standards for them. We already have standards for, uh, homeless shelters. And so that's my next, you know, that, so do they have to meet those standards, which is a sprinkler system? Well, if you allow a bunch of people to live inside a building for three months and that building catches on fire, you know, what, what kind of responsible, uh, group are we? If we don't protect them as well with the same safety measures that we protect other people? So that's just, that's my two cents. Uh, it's not, I'm not anti homeless. I'm not anti camp homeless. I just think that the intent is to be able to respond in an emergency evacuation system and not to find a cheap runaround for homeless shelters in the city. Thank you.
Can I respond? Um, I would just, I would encourage you, if you haven't already, look at the city of Portland's housing continuum documents. They've released this month, I think, three documents that basically they're struggling with the same thing. They started out with very temporary guidance and realized that temporary has become essentially a permanent need. And I would definitely agree that clarity is important. There should be a very clear kind of purpose statement about all of this. So that if you are about warming shelters, that's what you're clearly defining. But if you are about providing shelter, um, and there are triggers for life, safety, welfare under that heading, then, then you need to consider, consider that as well. But, um, if you're somewhere in between, that's where I think the community is going to get frustrated and angry. Um, I think the folks who are trying to, you know, they think do the right thing and try to help solve this issue, they're going to get frustrated and they'll turn their backs. So I, I would agree that clarity is going to be, is a good goal.
And I, and I want to remind this commission that we are a town of 20,000 people. We are not Portland. And, um, we are a town of 20,000 people. So, right, if, uh, if the big mudslide comes down I five and wipes out, you know, we should be able to respond, uh, by providing, uh, some emergency shelter to our friends. I agree with that. But, you know, we don't have the same problems that Portland has where their, uh, houseless population, uh, has, uh, become a major, uh, problem. So I, I, I just, I want to make sure that this is just not a runaround for the codes that we already have set in place. And it seems like that we need to have warming and cooling shelter codes in quicker than this emergency, uh, evacuation shelter idea. Uh, I think that's probably more important than working on this if that's, uh, if those aren't in there.
Okay. Uh, I have some comments, some observations. I, I see this, uh, this code change is very pointed and very specific to address, uh, people who are self evacuating from, you know, some sort of a disaster and are basically bringing their own shelter with them. So I think it's very, uh, it's, uh, very narrow and I think it's, uh, an important, uh, issue to be addressed. I agree that everything that's been brought up about, uh, warming shelters, cooling shelters, uh, houseless COVID are all important things. But I think if we try to solve all of those things, uh, we can easily get bogged down and not solve this one thing. So, uh, I, I'm, I'm of a mind to keep it, uh, narrow and pointed, uh, so that we can, uh, get this achieved quickly and, uh, and come back to those things because I think that they're much more difficult, uh, to solve than this one. The, one of the issues that, that I have a concern about is I quite frankly think, uh, one person should make this declaration and that should be the mayor. Uh, this is an emergency and, uh, it may be a situation where we really don't have time to round up a forum of the counselors. They may be evacuating themselves. So I think that's in a, uh, a function of the, uh, of the executive of the city. And I think the mayor should do that. I think that the mayor could be informed by other, uh, declarations of emergency, whether it's the governor or the president or whatever. But I can see, uh, uh, even a, a state emergency, uh, in some part of the state, not necessarily triggering this order in Milwaukee. So, uh, I think that, uh, uh, the mayor is the right person to do that, uh, because it's an emergency. We need to get this made and the less bureaucracy that we have, uh, to get this going, I think the better. The other issue is again, along the lines of the numbers, I think that we should come up with some, uh, measurable standard. I don't know what that standard is. I'm thinking, you know, off the top of my head. The largest class RV, uh, there's probably a standard out there already with some standoff space. And you say, uh, one vehicle per, um, you know, how many square fit feet that you have because there may be, uh, places in the, in the city that would only fit two. If Clackamas Town Center ever becomes parts of Milwaukee, you know, that's probably a hundred or more. So, uh, I think that we, uh, we need some flexibility, uh, in that regard so that we can get the right footprint of these vehicles, uh, uh, where they belong. So, uh, those are my two cents. Uh, any other comments?
Also, how many people per vehicle or per, you know, different type of vehicle, maybe looking at that as well? I would guess.
Well, yeah, I would, I would, I would say the, the less bureaucracy, the better. Uh, I think that we can, uh, you know, trying to over, uh, prescribe this thing, uh, is, is just going to slow it down, you know?
I, I, I'm not sure that I would fully agree that everybody is coming to these sites with their own RV or own shelter kind of on wheels, whatever it may be. I think you need to provide for both. I don't necessarily think that's happening. And it is, it does become concerning when you have multiple families sharing a unit. You start to worry about sanitation, health, et cetera. So there's some triggers there.
Just to build on that too, if somebody has an RV that has like a full bathroom and, you know, four family members living in there, that's much different than having, you know, six cars with four people in each, you know, fa- family of four in each car. And maybe only one bathroom, you know, with one shower or something on the, on the site. And so, you know, having a pos-, you know, just some guideline or, or something, I think some planning, I suppose, on, um, if they're bringing their own RV with their own bathroom facilities versus what's available on site for showering or for, um, and then how many cars without, that don't have, you know, running water or bathrooms. That's just, just kind of built on what you were saying.
Any other comments? Do we think we've, uh, given the, uh, staff enough to noodle on here?
I've got one more comment, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I just, sorry, I just, this, this is my thing right now. So I just got a lot of comments, sorry. I consider this as, what are your thresholds between this and the next phase? Because you're ultimately going to have projects that are not, that are going to start out temporary and become semi-permanent. And then, you know, maybe want to become permanent. So what are the triggers? And again, how does the community get involved at those different gates? To allow them to become semi-permanent? Cause inevitably you're going to have a situation that may have caused this, but it's just going to continue. These things don't tend to come to closure quickly. So just, that's it.
Maybe a final comment. I was just looking at some of the proposed language, um, in 1105. And again, and just, I think a clarity perspective, but sub B sites can be located on property owned or leased by public entities, nonprofits, businesses, or religious organizations, I think to Commissioner Edge or, or maybe someone else who brought it up, what about, uh, personally owned private property? You know, like if, if, if my home were owned by a, a trust, conceivably that would apply. But it wouldn't if it was owned by me as an individual. And so maybe what you really just mean is any property in the city of Milwaukee becomes eligible for this type of use or, or not. But I think, again, just trying to get, um, provide that, that level of precision for staff when and if an emergency were to happen.
Okay.
If it happened, Commissioner Sherman, um, would it, would you rely on zoning for the definition of temporary activity to then guide whether or not one of these shelters, housing, warming, whatever it may, what, whatever language we're going to use can actually be placed there? If it's outright, um, that zoning would not allow it, you know, what then?
It's a, that's a great question. Does, like, does something like this supersede zoning regulations? Which is what you were kind of talking about with that city of Portland example, where you still had to comply with River District and other overlays, like in terms of providing flexible tools, you know, ultimate flexibility would be, it applies anywhere regardless. Now, is that as far as we want to go as a community in a wildfire, earthquake, et cetera, type of disaster scenario?
So the county has, um, specific temporary permits for uses otherwise prohibited or temporary permits for dwellings, uh, for care or temporary permits for, um, you know, emergency shelter. They also have the, um, uh, safe overnight shelter, I think it is, um, program, which is, uh, you know, is a set of guidelines that complements the temporary use otherwise prohibited to allow churches to do exactly what it is that we're trying to permit here. Um, and so I would just recommend that we perhaps look into, um, some of the county's language around this and, um, see if there's, uh, anything that we can, uh, glean from that to, um, maybe allow a little bit more flexibility in some of the ways that, um, much of the commission was talking about, you know, should be available, uh, including whether or not we rely on an emergency declaration at all.
Yeah.
Will the staff just tell us, uh, the next steps in this, uh, discussion?
Uh, the next step is we have a work session with the, um, city council, um, on December 1st. Um, and then we're, we're coming back to you, uh, for a public hearing on December 15th. So, yeah.
All right. Okay. I'm going to open it up for, uh, other discussions. Before we do that, I will just tell you that, uh, uh, we will talk about, uh, the timeline on the Waverly proposal at the end, when the staff goes over the forecasted future meetings. So, uh, keep your powder dry on that one and we'll get to it, uh, at the end. So do the commissioners or staff have any other business or updates?
Uh, we had our, uh, blue ribbon, uh, city hall, uh, meeting and, uh, we actually had, uh, uh, somebody come talk us to, to us about real estate, uh, and the possibilities of being able to lease that building. And what we did find out is that multifamily is, uh, overbuilt, so the housing emergency is, is kind of gone. But I'm sure our, our, our staff will still declare it. What I also, uh, we're, we're going to launch a website, uh, so that people can virtually join us and, uh, talk about the discussions that we're having, uh, what they would like to see in the building and answer some questions. So look for that on the, uh, city website, uh, and join in the survey.
Thank you for that update. Any other, uh, updates from any other commissioners? Okay.
I have a question. I am, are we in the, are we in, uh, 7.0, uh, Chair Massey?
Uh, we're about to be.
Oh, great.
Are there any other items for discussion?
I was.
I wanted to. Oh, sorry.
I was going to say, be, being in item seven, thank you, sorry. Um, I was just, there's been any, any discussion around the Frog Ferry effort that some folks may or may not be familiar with on, on kind of the planning staff side of things. This is an effort that has been kind of championed by some stakeholders out of, uh, kind of out of the, the greater Portland area to reinstitute, uh, ferry service along the Willamette River going from, uh, Vancouver, Washington into Portland. Making, there's a proposed stop in Milwaukee Bay Park, which is why I asked. And then making its way further south down the Willamette River. I'm just wondering kind of whether and how, um, we've been involved in any of these discussions, which admittedly are still, I think, pretty abstract and, and fairly long range. But, um, there's a number of boosters behind the project that keep just trying to push it forward. So I'm wondering if, um, if there's any updates from staff in terms of our engagement on this.
Um, I can tell you that I have not, I've heard of the project. I know what's going on, but I haven't heard it being discussed at the city of Milwaukee. But that doesn't mean it hasn't because I'm still really new to, to this. it hasn't because I'm still really new to, to the space. So maybe Leila knows something about it and, and maybe not. Leila, do you want to jump in for a second?
Just enough to be slightly dangerous and avoid the question, but we have been engaged. I know Kelly Brooks in engineering have been in contact with him. To what extent, I don't know, but we can look into that and let you know.
Great, thanks, Leila.
Yeah.
Other items for discussion? Laura, you're muted.
I didn't say anything.
Oh, I thought you wanted that.
Go ahead, Laura.
I was just going to say, the only thing that I, that I thought I would mention, Vera, we've got a whole community survey coming up on the Comp Plan Implementation Project and that is launching tomorrow. So I really hope that you'll take the time to get in there and, and answer the survey questions and then send it out to all of your constituents. We're trying to get as much feedback as is possible and it launches, well, not tomorrow, I say that because I keep thinking, we're off tomorrow. It launches on Thursday, so I encourage you to go take a look at it on Thursday and send it out to folks.
If I could, you're all going to get an email from me that will be an email blast that you can then forward to all of your friends and family. So sit tight, Thursday morning, it'll, all of your inboxes are going to be flooded with stuff.
And in the subject, can you say please forward? That would help.
Okay.
Any other discussion items before we go to the forecast?
Yeah, just one last comment, sorry. Arrow is Veterans Day and I know we have two veterans, I believe, Chair Massey and Commissioner Gashrawadi, is that right?
He's correct, yes.
Well, congratulations and thank you for your service. Happy Veteran.
It was an honor and a pleasure.
Absolutely, I do it all again.
And both of you are Marines, is that right?
I was Navy.
Navy.
I'm a Marine, so yes, today's our birthday as well.
And I understand today is like the 145th birthday?
245th.
Geez, well, another big congrats, that's cool, that's very cool.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
So let's go to the forecast.
Okay, so upcoming November 24th, we've got a work session item for the comprehensive plan implementation project update. That's looking at the code audit, that's tentative right now. Vera, I don't know if you have, I don't think we've decided to 100% have that conversation yet, we're still waiting for some stuff from the consultants, so we'll let you know if we're actually doing that. And then the other thing is that at our last meeting, we didn't get the opportunity to go through the annual work plan and the bylaws update, so we're going to get to that on the 24th. Also regarding waiverly, so afterwards, you know, it's a, it's a fast and furious meeting and at the end, we kind of huddled to try to get the dates right to make sure procedurally we had everything correct. But after staff went back and talked about it a little bit, we realized that we're going to need to make some changes to the dates and we're going to bring those to you on November 24th for discussion. The one thing that I will say, just so you're aware of, is that originally on December 8th, we didn't say that we were going to have oral testimony, but according to kind of process, we do need to have oral testimony on December 8th. So if anybody asks you about that, just let them know that we will be taking oral testimony, but we'll also have everything posted and we'll have letters out to the interested parties and Vera will walk you through all of those dates on the 24th. Do you have any questions about that? Okay, cool.
Does that mean, does that mean that you're expecting to extend the meeting or to push the date off?
Yes, the dates are going to push, yeah, you won't actually, and, and on the 8th, there, there won't be deliberation at that time either. So it'll just be more testimony based on what has come in up to this point and then the staff response to that. And yeah, we'll lay it all out because I don't think now that it comes back to you. And Vera, correct me if I'm wrong, for an actual deliberations until January, is that correct, Vera?
Yeah, that's correct because one, following that hearing, the applicant is afforded the opportunity for one week for a deadline for their last written argument. So the actual deliberation and potential vote by the commission won't be until January.
Yep. And yeah, Vera will walk you through that whole process on the 24th. And so then, let's see, hearing items, that's the continued, that was the waiverly on the 8th and then the code amendments that we just talked about are coming back. Although Vera, I think that you said that they weren't coming back until later, did I get that incorrect?
I'm, I'm sorry, what, the code amendments?
Yeah, that's coming on December 8th.
Oh, it's December 8th, sorry, that's when the public hearing has been posted, sorry, yes.
Okay, got it, I just wanted to be sure. And then Brett, the staff member, he's going to come to you and talk to you about the Central Milwaukee Bike Ways Concept Plan and update on where the city is with that. And then also regarding the Title 18 Flood Hazard Regulations Amendments that are required, we've got some things we need to update for the state, so we'll be talking about that specifically. And there's not that second meeting in December and then we don't have anything on the schedule yet for January 12th. And I think that's it for the forecaster update.
And as I remember, the Joint City Council Planning Commission meeting has been pushed to January?
19th, that's right. Thanks for bringing up that chair because we really are hoping that all of you will be able to attend that. That's the opportunity to kind of go through the work plan with them and just get feedback. And then also we'll have a new council member at that time, so it's a good opportunity for you all to sit down with city council and kind of hear about how your work plan is influenced by their priorities and that kind of thing. All right.
Any questions or comments about the future forecast? It's going to be busy. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion we adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it, thanks everyone, good night.
Good night.
Night, everyone.
Nice to see you.